Welcome back to, good morning and welcome back to the Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forums. My name is Sean McGill. I'm a member of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, Nassau County Chamber of Commerce, as well as a member of our Government Affairs Committee. And we, every year we do these forums. This year they look a little different instead of having a live audience. We've been Zooming. We've done our Board of County Commission Candidates, our Supervisor of Elections, our Superintendent in Schools. All of those videos are up on our website. And now it's, it's our pleasure to speak with our candidates running for Nassau County School Board. And those candidates are Ms. Cindy Grooms and Mr. Russell Johnson. As a, as a reminder to the format of what we'll be discussing this morning, each candidate's going to have five minutes to introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about why they're running for the Nassau County School Board. And then we'll start a series of questions. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer those questions and we'll rotate who starts first. So each one of you guys will be in the hot seat an equal amount of times. And with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Cindy Grooms to introduce yourself and tell us more about you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Cindy Grooms. I've been in Nassau County since 1977. My father worked for the Air Truck Control Center, so we transferred here and we, I came here when I was in sixth grade. So I've had almost my whole life here minus my, my elementary years. I went to West Hilliard Middle, Senior High School, graduated there in 1981, got married and had a child, went back to college. So I started my career in college, I think I was 27 when I started. I ended up with a bachelor's degree in elementary education, went to work at West Nassau High School as a special education teacher because I loved special ed. So I went on and obtained a master's degree in special education and I just loved going to school. So continued on and ended up with a doctorate in ed leadership. So with that, I worked at West Nassau High School as a special ed teacher. Then I became a dean of students. I spent three, three and a half years as a dean of students. Then I became the assistant principal at West Nassau where I spent seven years, transferred to the district office to work for Dr. John Ruiz as coordinator of student services. And then I was promoted to the director of secondary education, stayed there and then some transitioning came in with the new superintendent, went back into the coordinator position. And then I was offered a really cool job working in Chilton County with special ed students. So I transferred there and ended up retiring for the school district so that I could run for school board.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good morning, John. I'd like to thank the chamber for having this forum and thank Ms. Regina and Ms. Alex and yourself today. And this is a season of change and I thank you again for inviting me. I'm Russell, Russell Johnson, your, your school board member, District Four. I'm the oldest son of Russell and Betty Johnson and a lifelong resident of the period. I graduated from West Nassau High School in 1972 and the University of North Florida in class of 1976. I married my wife Nancy Carol Johnson, a 1974 graduate of West Nassau and a 1982 graduate at UNF, 42 years ago. And we have two sons. Jake is married to Leah Orflin Johnson and they have one daughter, Kalen. And as we speak, Kalen's in surgery this morning and I thought some prayers were with her. And she'll also be entering the first grade at Hilliard Elementary School this year. Kyle, my oldest son, is a student at University of South Florida pursuing a master's degree in business and project management. All of our children attend or are graduates of our Nassau County Schools. My wife Nancy, a retired educator, taught 35 years with the Nassau County Schools at Calhoun Intermediate, her entire career. She continues to volunteer and tutor in our schools today. While attending West Nassau, I became interested in vocational agriculture through the Future Farmers of America. It initiated my interest for cattle production and later assisted with my college tuition. I obtained a degree, degree in political science and public administration that served me well as, as I worked with the United States Department of Agriculture Farm Service Agency. Before retiring with 34 and a half years of service, I worked as a state conservation specialist. I was responsible for allocating millions of dollars in assistance to farmers and ranchers, both locally and statewide through conservation programs. This necessitated interpretation of following the strictest of federal guidelines so that I, we did not misappropriate federal funding. I occupied significant positions within the agencies such as internal auditor, chairman of the grievance committee, and executive director of the Nassau Duval Counties, and executive director of San Francisco's County. I believe the constructive skills I learned in these positions enables me to be a conservative voice on our school board and allows me to effectively collaborate with others concerning the operation of our school system, especially with budget distributions. I have continued to assist the Department of Agriculture by serving on the USDA Farm Service Agency Board as an Alachia County Committee Member since 2017 for the Duval, Baker, and Nassau Committees. I will also be attending a forum with them today, our bi-monthly phone conference following this meeting. I serve on the Nassau County School Board to give back to my community, which has given and continues to give so much to my family. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, we'll start with a kind of an easy warm-up question and then get into it. And as a reminder, a minute and a half to answer. I'll give you a gentle 30-second reminder and then the virtual taser comes out. We'll start with Ms. Grooms and real simply, what's motivating you to run for Nassau County School Board?
Um, my, my, um, my motivation is pretty simple. I've been an educator for over 20 years and I really want to see what's best for all students. You know, my goal is to ensure that every student is fully prepared for the next stage of life, like post-school transitioning, and that they all have a goal that the district is offering them opportunities to decide whether they want to go to college, whether they want to have a career, you know, the military. I want to ensure that every student has a place and an opportunity. And I think that I can help bring that to the table.
Thank you, Ms. Grooms. Mr. Johnson, what's motivating you to continue to run for school board?
Sean, I'm a candidate for the school board because I understand the number one role of a school board member as we have to look out for our students. Their education is the most important job we have to fulfill as a school board member. As managers of our public schools, we must follow the state and federal laws as it pertains to all functions within our system. I'm out and about in our district, accessible to the public, accountable for our school performance. And we want to, I try to attend as many functions at schools throughout the district to support our schools and families and communities. I promote the business of our school system and I want to ensure that our students get the best education for our tax dollars being spent. This board supports our superintendent and I trust her to bring sound decisions and to bring her suggestions back to the board for improvement needed within our schools. I study to make the best decisions. I try to attend all the workshops to learn, to understand the precise language when breaking down or trying to interpret the policies of our programs within the good of our district.
30 seconds.
I'm always focused on the global outcome. I try to use my ability and availability to serve and my commitment to improve our schools. My, my previous training in monetary allocations and budgets and my career experience with evaluating policies brings this desire for us to, to, to ensure that, that we live in this county and promote our schools. I live a life of integrity, dedication, and professional excellence. I have no political agenda by serving on this board. I have no financial obligation nor intention to micromanage any board decisions for school operations. I'm running to serve the people of Nassau County by continuing as your district board school board member, representing the Hilliard and Brossville area. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And don't go anywhere. You're on the hot seat first for this next question, which, which is kind of a continuation of what we just spoke about. And that is, what is your vision for education in Nassau County? Mr. Johnson?
My goal is focused, as mentioned earlier, on the needs of our students and how the best, they can best acquire the best education that they deserve. I believe my commitment to the schools and communities will continue to thrive as we focus on proficiency, productivity, and provisions in our schools. Proficiency in all school functions that we, we, we look at from the top down, self-included, that simply means that we get better every day at what we do. We want to preserve, preserve our level of excellence because we want to keep our top-rated teachers through learning new ways to teach. Our teachers so eloquently did this during the pandemic, which changed everything in our county. We want to maintain the best educators. And my mind goes instantly to Whitney Jones, our district teacher of the year from Wildlife Elementary, and our own Kristin Musgrove from Hilliard Elementary, Hilliard Middle School, excuse me, that, the 2019 recipient of the Milken Award. She's the only teacher in Florida to receive this award. That's two years in a row for Nassau County because last year Jennifer Albert, the STEM teacher in Emma Love Hardy Elementary School also won this prestigious award.
30 seconds.
We want to keep our best, we want to keep our best teachers. We want to support our non-instructional employees. We want to start or continue their educational journey. We want to have a program of study that, that they continue. It's a win-win. We want to be productive in our county to support a vocational training program. We want to continue to expand these programs. And finally provisions, we want to have new standards and practices come into play. We want to give our best teachers the, the best salary allocations to broaden the gap between a seasoned teacher and a new, new beginning teacher.
Minute and a half?
We cannot, we cannot, we want to ensure that our salary tables are revamped in the coming year for our teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Grooms, what's your vision for education in Nassau County?
You know Nassau County is a wonderful district. It's always been a top-rated district for over 15 years. And that we have to take a lot of pride in. The thing that I would like to see that we work a little bit harder on is our students that are scoring ACT and SAT scores for college readiness. I mean, if we look at the data, we currently have a high percentage of them that are scoring level three, but not level four and five. I'd like to see the AP programs be increased inside the schools and look, work a little bit better with AP programs for the students. Hire teachers and retain them in those areas, provide more professional development so that we can nurture them, grow them to be more successful, and the students can be more successful year after year. I'd like to see us do a better job with our educators. We all know that, you know, the education world is not supported financially like it should be. I would like to see how we could work with the budget and try to find a way to increase the salary of our educators along with getting their planning periods back that have been gone for a very long time. Because I think that the time, planning time is the most important thing if you want your students to be successful and your teachers.
30 seconds.
I'd like to talk about the budget. You know, I'd like to work with the board and the superintendent to take the budget and look at it more effectively and be more proactive with what we, our plans are. You know, a year out, what, what does the data show in us? What is the school showing us as far as their school improvement plans? What have they listed in there that are primary importance for them? How can we, where is technology going? You know, what, what does our four-year plan look like for technology in the schools? You know, how are we spending our money on technology?
Minute and a half?
And, you know, basically just work towards making the success for the students. Because in the end, it's always all about the students. So it's really important that we provide them the best instruction.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grooms. And for both of you, as we go through some of these, like this next question is a two-part question. If you need me to repeat it, just ask. I'm happy to do that. I know, I know it's a little difficult in this situation. But for you, Ms. Grooms, what do you think the public expects of its school board members? And how might that be different than the superintendent of schools?
The school board member's job is to ensure that thoughts and wishes of the community is reflected in the management and the operation of the schools. That is, that is truly what a school board member is. You know, as a board member, you know, my job is to listen and relate to the board and the superintendent what the community wants and needs for their schools. You know, we work, we, we should work with the superintendent. But at the end of the day, our, our true job is to oversee what it is that the public and the people want for their schools. And then bring that back to the board, collaborate with the board members, you know, provide data, provide best practices to show, you know, what's going on, what's going on in other districts that are successful. I mean, we're a small district. You know, we can, you know, use community relations and, and I've done this for many years and collaborated with bigger districts. They have a lot more people working in their district office and, and they can help us. And so with that, I've been able to go out and find out what is best practices, what's going on in Orange County, Miami Dade, Hillsboro, Levy, Gilchrist, you know, and we've collaborated. So I think that that's one of the things, I think collaboration's going to be the most important thing when you're dealing with the school district. It's got to be collaboration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grooms. Mr. Johnson?
We know that the school superintendent is, is the director of the school district. And they are responsible to see that every detail that involves the students, the teachers, the school board, the community, and they, it's conducted professionally and in the best interest of all stakeholders while trying to maintain and control our school functions as, as basically prescribed by the state statutes and the Board of Education. The school board, on the other hand, is responsible for considering recommendations submitted by the superintendent. Then they may then determine policies and programs consistent with the state laws to comply with the effective operations and the general improvements of our school. Our school board members, we have authority only when the, the board is in, a meeting in session and in a quorum is present. As a school board member, I, I listen to concerns and I seek for answers and support my findings for the global advancement of our schools. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And don't go anywhere because you're up first on this question. And, and kind of a follow-up to what we just spoke about, what are your thoughts on an appointed superintendent versus an elected school superintendent?
Appointment instead of elected. I, I'm for the elected school superintendent so that all stakeholders in the counties have an opportunity to elect that person to serve in that capacity. It's, it's, it's been a historical position in our county for it to be elected by the citizens of the county, and I would like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Grooms?
You know, that's a two-sided coin. That's a thought that people talk about on a regular basis is whether you should have an elected or an appointed. I currently work in a district where it's an appointed superintendent. You know, they go through the board, they go through a hiring process, they're vetted. They, you know, it's, it's a long process to appoint a superintendent of schools. On the other hand, it's basically at the base, at the mercy of the board. You know, that's, that's another thing. Who are your board members? You know, what qualifications do they have to actually make that decision when they're appointing a superintendent of schools? But that's what the people do. They hire the board members for those very things. The elected official, on the other hand, gives the, the people the opportunity to elect who they want. However, we do find sometimes that maybe the qualification or criteria isn't there. So, you know, for me, I think that in our district, you know, staying with the elected is probably what the people would want.
Thank you, Ms. Grooms. I didn't, I told you guys I wasn't giving you all easy questions. And, and for this question, for both of you guys, put COVID aside. We'll talk about that in a second. But tell me what you think some of the recent successes as well as challenges have been for the Nassau County school system. And we'll start with Ms. Grooms.
Gosh, I think just the collaboration within the community, within the healthcare services, within the superintendent, the board members, the teachers. I mean, that actually, we, you know, when we came into schools being shut down, Governor DeSantis decided to close them down, you know, they were, you know, scrambling to try to make things right. I think they did an outstanding job of pulling together what they needed to continue with education. And that's how Nassau County is. That's how the teachers are. They, you know, they're going to do whatever it takes. That's the wonderful thing about working in Nassau County is these teachers truly love what they do and they love their students. And, you know, they come out and, you know, I, so I understand they made the plans, food services, delivering food, you know, quickly trying to put packets together for paper, pencil for kids who didn't have computers, for online resources and practice for the kids that were going to use computers. I think they did an outstanding job considering the amount of time they had to pull it together.
Thank you, Ms. Grooms. Mr. Johnson?
When we look at our school system, you know, we look at how it depends, we look at success in our schools. And it depends on the, on the tone at the top. Just like with any other business, we, we take, we trend to take on the personality of our leaders. And Dr. Marcus Jackson, a CEO from Jackson Education Consultant Atlanta, wrote an article and I read it and it stuck with me that, you know, if, if a principal is mean, the staff will be mean to one another and the kids. And the kids will be mean to one another. If a principal is full of energy, excitement, and enthusiasm, the teachers will be energized to teach and the students will be excited about learning. The principal can either extinguish a flame of positivity or ignite a flame of hope. The principal is responsible for the culture and the mood of our schools. If you want to see what success looks like, take a look at, at the top. It inspires, motivates, and creates what's pointing towards a goal. As it works its magic, others join in and are caught in the excitement of learning to be. That's the ultimate success of a school year, when everybody involved is excited about being. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And, and along those lines, obviously, we, we can't ignore what's been going on with COVID. I know the school system just published its back-to-school plan and, and we are going to do a little bit of Monday morning quarterbacking here as to how do you think we're doing and, and planning for our, our COVID response and our back-to-school plan? And we'll start with Mr. Johnson on that one.
I definitely believe that our school district is moving in the right direction. We moved quickly. We provided, you know, our laptop computers. We implemented virtual and paper instructions. We assisted with automation, internet connection for our students. We initiated the grab-and-go lunch programs for every child zero through 18 years old at the five locations in the county. Our parents, students, and teachers worked together during the last nine weeks of school to complete assignments that comply with the county and state educational requirements. And our school district is moving forward and should another pandemic, you know, occur, we're ready to implement a plan for instruction. Nonetheless, we were able to quickly turn our education perspective around with our new way of thinking perhaps forever. To our advantage, when we were going into the spring break, employees gave their time to, to get us up and running. Our school board was kept on top of the matters thanks to our superintendent's vision of turnaround. We knew that food distribution centers were, were set up by our non-instructional employees and then buses were added to assist. And I want to thank them for all their hard work because I was out there with them. Computers were just, they were provided to our children for learning. Teachers planned virtual and, and paper lessons. Say, and they contacted each parent to assure confidence of lessons and completion of assignments to learn. Many hours were put into our plan and we want to thank everybody. I want to thank everybody for the hard work. And I was thankful that I was part to be active, be an active part of this historical event in time. And again, that's the reason I'm running. It's, it's the success for all of our schools. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Grooms?
Could you please repeat that question?
Absolutely. Basically, we're doing a little bit of Monday morning quarterbacking here. And, and what are your thoughts on, on how we've responded to the, the COVID crisis in terms of education and, and moving forward?
I think, I think our school district has done a wonderful job. I think it was put on them at the last minute. I think that we got through the end of last year. I think they pulled together what they needed to do for the resources of all the students. You know, the students that are, don't have internet, those that do have internet. Teachers got on Zoom and met with their kids, you know, to try to keep school going. You know, we were at the end of the school year, thank goodness. You know, moving forward with this pandemic, you know, it's going to be a question of where are we going to go with technology? You know, we're moving into a new school year, new standards. Last year we covered old standards and just, you know, continued to keep school running. How are we going to teach new standards now? What is, what is the classroom going to look like from a technology perspective or even from the perspective of students that do not have technology? That's going to be the part that's going to be, you know, very difficult for all, all school districts. You know, what, what professional development do we have in place with our teachers to ensure that they do know how to use technology and incorporate lessons in there? What resources, what manipulatives are they using to reach the kids? Because, you know, elementary kids is a lot different than a high school kid. Those kids, you know, learn by strategies. They learn area model. They learn, you know, Big Ten, Big Seven. You know, they, those things they learn and that's how they remember what they do. It's going to be a challenge for our students, especially your special education students also. If they, you know, if this continues and they aren't able to come into the school system, you know, how are we going to reach them? What are we going to provide in place for the individual education plans to make sure they're being served? And so those are the challenges that I think our school district can meet and will meet because Nassau, I mean Nassau County always meets challenges. But I think, you know, technology's going to be a big issue.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grooms. All right, we're coming down the home stretch. Just a couple of questions left. And of course, with this one, starting with Ms. Grooms, it's, it's not a Chamber of Commerce forum without asking this question. And, and that's basically, in your opinion, what is the role of the Chamber of Commerce in interacting with the school board?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. The Chamber of Commerce has so many supports that provide for the community. You know, we did, we need the support of the chamber. We need the resources that are out there. We need all of the services that you can provide that the companies align with you, that provides to our school systems. You know, I just think that you have, you guys give a lot to the, to the community and, and we can need, continue to work with you.
Thank you, Ms. Grooms. Mr. Johnson?
You are, you know, the chamber is a wealth of reliable information and it's, it's an excellent resource for our community members. Newcomers are coming to our area and want to know more about us every day. We're, we're growing every day. This is, we're certainly growing in this county. And you certainly have the opportunity to create a positive impact with families looking for the best schools. I see your partnership a, a bridge, if you will, that connects local businesses with our school district. The chamber is a positive light in our community as you share concerns and needs with our state representatives. You're able to, to, to reach out beyond our limitations. And I just ask that you continue to engage with businesses, to use your influence and to help them thrive. You know, we also ask that you continue to be a valid partnership with our schools as you help our students make career connections as they learn and grow within our district. As you, you know, as you provide that giving and helping hand to our schools, you remain a viable leader for us, skilled at developing meaningful student experiences that help shape our young leaders by amendering students' performance.
30 seconds.
And providing knowledge of, of services for future companies as our employees and consumers, which we hope will return tenfold as they embark on their new careers in our area. We thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, you guys have made it to the last question. And for this one, I'll, I'll let you kind of use it as a wrap-up and, and give you two minutes to answer that question. And simply put, starting with Mr. Johnson, why are you the best candidate for this position?
Sean, as your current school board member, I, I understand very well that my role is to take care of our students. And I'm about a one-fifth vote on all decisions proposed and passed by our school board. This is why I seriously can study and I consider every best options available when dealing with our finances, our global outcomes, as it focuses on our children's education. It's also why I believe my commitment to schools and communities will continue to thrive as we, as I mentioned earlier, focus on the, on the three Ps: productivity, proficiency, and provisions. Proficiency in everything that we do in our schools and productivity in areas of performance and providing provisions for every employee as we meet the needs of our students. It's a pleasure to serve as your District Four School Board Member. I do work hard to fulfill my responsibilities for the betterment of our schools and all stakeholders. And I believe my role to the school board is to listen to the concerns. I seek for answers and I support my findings for global advancement of our schools. Again, the vote on August 18th for Russell L. Johnson will continue this expectation for a child better tomorrow in the Nassau County school system. And again, I thank the chamber for the opportunity to attend this forum. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Grooms, why are you the best candidate for this position?
Um, I think for me, even before I was in college, you know, I've, I've probably touched every, almost every part of the school district's job performance. You know, as a substitute teacher, cafeteria worker, did some furniture cleaning, educator, administrator, coordinator, director. I think all of this is an asset to the school district. I think the knowledge that I have of the system itself, working with the other administrators, I think is going to be an asset for the board. You know, I'll be like Rusty said, one-fifth of the board. But I think I can bring a different perspective to the board because I've actually been in the school. working in all capacities from the 20 years I've been here. You know, and I think focus has to be shifted to our students and the educational process at all grade levels. You know, Nassau County is a, is a district, along with many other districts, that are facing financial realities that, that have a great bearing on the outcome of student education. We need to maximize every value for every dollar invested and ensure that the main focus is students, you know, where's our money going? So I believe that because I have been in these positions and I have worked in 20 years in the school system, that I think that I can bring a lot to the table to support the superintendent and the board members and making decisions that are in the best interest of the students in our district.
Thank you, Ms. Grooms. And I'd like to thank you both for overcoming all of the challenges of, of running for an office this year. Ms. Cynthia Grooms, Mr. Russell Johnson, thank you. We wish you nothing but the best of luck through the rest of the summer before the election. If you would like to learn more about these candidates, you can go to our website, NassauCountyFLChamber.com. NassauCountyFLChamber.com, where we have the answers from their questionnaires as well as the videos and answers from all of our, our county candidates. They're also on our Facebook page. And we look forward to having our municipal commission forms a little bit later this summer. Thank you for watching. I hope you guys all stay healthy. And of course, don't forget to get out and vote on August 18th, either in person or through our various early voting options. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.